Good to hear your voice.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, July 11th of 2023. This is the Stoughton City Council, and the first item of business is the roll call.
Lee Jensen.
Here.
Payton.
Here.
Caravelo.
He's absent and excused.
Reeves.
Here.
Shurlocke.
Here.
Hiley.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Mieske.
Here.
Lookout.
I believe she's absent and then excused.
Oh, yes. Okay, so we have eight holders present.
You want to call me?
Oh, I'm sorry. I marked you there, Hersch.
It's okay.
So we do have eight holders present. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we are certified in compliance with open meeting laws. And the first item of business would be a public comment period. And we do have one person signed up to speak, and that would be Joanne Grassman. And you're gonna have to push the button so the red lights come on, and then you'll have three minutes. Perfect.
That's it. Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Joanne Grassman. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Stoughton Downtown Merchants Association. And a couple of months ago, we put in a proposal to the city to ask for $24,000 for the Stoughton Downtown Merchants Association as startup funds for the organization to promote downtown Stoughton as a visitor's destination. And I'm here again to revisit that request and ask that the council consider that request again. I know that there are a lot of competing entities for that, for those funds, and there have been some distributed already. And certainly, the Stoughton Community Foundation and the proposal that's being used for that with allowing them to do grants for community organizations is a worthwhile endeavor. Again, I'm here to ask again that the council consider allowing the, some of the funds to be used for the promotion of downtown Stoughton. And I'm going to pass something out. It's just a quick flyer. I read a lot, and I, one of the things that I subscribe to is The Discoverer. And an interesting article that they had was the best small town in each of the 50 states in the United States. And you can see from this one, there's, there was a lot of beautiful small towns that were listed. But New Glarus, Wisconsin, was listed as their pick for the best small town in Wisconsin. New Glarus is wonderful, of course, but I think Stoughton is better. And I'd like to see us receive some of that kind of publicity. And we believe that the Stoughton Downtown Merchants Association is an entity that can do that for Stoughton. The downtown is, of course, the thing that makes, not the thing, I shouldn't say that. It's one of the things that makes Stoughton such a great place. So I did a little research and looked, did a simple search on the internet for best places in Wisconsin. Travel Wisconsin is the tourist website for Wisconsin. They listed seven Wisconsin destinations for small-town charm. New Glarus, Tepua Falls, Baraboo, Princeton, Elkhart Lake, Cambridge, Stockholm, no Stoughton. Hotels.com has the 10 must-see small towns in Wisconsin. Sturgeon Bay, Elkhart Lake, Cedarburg, Ephraim, Stockholm, New Glarus, Mazo Maney, Hayward, Fish Creek, and Bayfield. Travel and Leisure has the 10 best small towns in Wisconsin. Again, no Stoughton in that list. Stockholm is there again. Elkhart Lake is there again. Spring Green is there. Minnaqua is there. Mount Horrib is there, but not us. We don't have the capacity right now to be able to do the kinds of things that we need to do in order to put Stoughton out there as a name, a place, a beautiful place that people can come and visit. I looked up some longer lists. Planet Ware has the 14 top-rated places. No Stoughton in that list again. I looked up the top 25 of another website. No Stoughton in that one again. Cambridge was in there. Columbus was in there. New Glarus was in there. Mazo Maney was in there. Mineral Point, Princeton, Stockholm, again. All great places, but I would argue that Stoughton is as good or better than some of those as a destination place. Again, I'd ask the city council to reconsider or to consider again the request for the Downtown Merchants Association. We have a core group of dedicated people. We're moving ahead with some of the plans that we said we would do in the proposal. But right now, the biggest question that we can ask ourselves is what are the things that we can do that don't cost any money? And there's not a lot. So, one more time, I'd just like the council to consider the request from the Downtown Merchants Association so that we can have Stoughton's name on some of these must-visit places. Thank you.
Next item is communications and presentations. Are there any communications from Alders? No communications?
I guess I, I guess I do want to thank the fair board for putting on a good fair this past week. And, you know, I thought, I think, a lot of people from the community had a good time. So I just want to thank them for putting on a good fair once again.
All right. Any other communications? And I would just add on to that. I was down there pretty much every day. The weather was good most days except for Wednesday. Dan Glenn and I went down one day and met with fair board officials. And then Dan and our engineer from Strand went down there another day and met with the fair board officials to discuss the man park master plan. And I would like the council to know that we also looked at our agreement, our contract with the fair, and Matt confirmed that we are under contract with the fair until, I believe, it's September 1st of 2028. So in spite of what you might hear on the streets, you know, we are under contract and we're committed, you know, for the fair for the long run. And we're working with them to address improvements that we can make that we feel will be beneficial to not only the fair, but the park and the community as a whole. And while we were down there, if you've been down there, you might notice that the bridge over the river has been opened up. Rodney coordinated that somehow while he was on vacation. That happened. So we want to give thanks to Rodney and the team for executing that. And the flowers and plantings down there are just awesome.
If I can just expand, just so the council knows. We made temporary measures to complete the trail from Fourth Street to where the project terminated and to prevent people from getting into the powerhouse area and the area to the north. We put in temporary fencing off to the side of either side of the trail from Fourth Street back to the main line of the new trail. It's not a closed little tunnel. It's actually like 25 or 30 feet wide. The path is about 12 or 15 feet of, actually, it's pulverized asphalt material that was compacted. But it's allowed us to do it on the surface, knowing that we've got remediation work that has to occur there. It just created an environment so both bikes, pedestrians, and others can use that facility and cross the bridge and get back to Fourth Street without having to go back and forth across the bridge only one way. So it is a temporary situation until the remediation start, work starts, but it is open, and we're glad to see that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hersch and a second by Schumacher. Would anybody like anything acted on separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Okay. Next action item is... Item number, six. Yep. Ordinance 21 of 2023, and this one came as a second reading from the Public Safety Committee. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's ordinance 21, 2023, amending section 70-176 of the Stoughton City Code of Ordinances relating to parking prohibited at all times on the northwest, or excuse me, the north side of West Wilson Street, 40 feet west from Lincoln Avenue. And I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Alder Person Mieske. Alder Person Jensen.
Chief is here. If you have any questions, I think we had a discussion on it the last time. It's needed for visibility and high-traffic volume during school time.
All right. Anything you want to add, Chief?
No, that's just a congested area. We're pick up, pick up and drop off students. Just line of sight.
I think you have to come up to the mic so people online can actually hear you.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, just adding to Alder Jensen's comments, it's a congested area during the school day. That hill presents a certain problem that kind of makes it more feasible to extend the parking, the no parking back from 15 to 40 feet. It also is an attractive area for employees in the area to park. So oftentimes, they're parked right up to the 15 feet, if not even protruding into the 15-foot area that's prohibited now. So extending it back to 40 feet would seem to make more sense. Again, it would improve the line of sight. The amount of pedestrian, pedestrian traffic there is pretty high. And then we have the larger vehicles, such as the school buses, is, school buses entering and exiting the school.
All right. Any questions for the chief?
I guess I had one. I think this came up last time. How did you decide on 40 feet versus the 15? Is that just a normal standard or?
Just looking at it, it seemed to make a lot of more sense to just kind of more than double it. So keeping like three car lengths back from the intersection. On the 40-foot suggestion came from Public Works as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you. Chief, I believe you were going to also paint the curbs on this.
Yes, so it would have a signage clearly indicating it, then we'd put the yellow.
Yeah, to make it more obvious.
Absolutely.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any, any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. All right. Next item is R 105 of 2023. This one came from the Finance Committee. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right. This is R 105, 2023, resolution to amend the City of Stoughton investment policy. So moved.
Second.
Second by Jensen. Okay. Alder Person Schumacher.
This kind of fills back in after, at the last council meeting when we repealed the ordinance that covered investment policy, which got to be a little bit difficult to have it at least as an ordinance. Instead, this allowed for a little bit of rewriting in there based on some of the Government Finance Officers Association policy and to get some, some of the updates made into this investment policy.
All right. Anything you want to add, Director Ehlinger?
Yeah, when the council approved this at the last meeting, this resolution was approved, and it said, based upon, you approved the attached policy. There was no attached policy. So I thought it'd be better for you folks to see it and vote on it then.
All right. And the policy's in the packet. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Our next item was discussion and possible action on the City of Stoughton Aldermanic Appointment Questionnaire. And I'll let the clerk, maybe Candy, can just kind of give us an update of where we're at on, in this process.
Yes, we have this application for District 4, and I do have another application that is coming in for Alder Vanegas's vacancy. So we will be moving through the process and have everything ready and prepared for the July 25th meeting.
Okay, so the application period for District 4, is that ended?
They can submit them until the 20, up until the week before the 25th, the Friday before.
For one or both of the vacancies?
Both of them.
Oh, okay.
Yes, correct.
All right. And then we had the item on there about the questionnaire. Is that something we need to go through tonight? Or are we going to wait until the 25th?
We'll wait until then so you can review the questionnaire with the candidate.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, so that's the update. We'll go to the next item, which is R 113 of 2023. And this one here came from the Finance Committee. Alder Person Schumacher.
This is R 113, 2023, a resolution authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into an agreement with Heartland Ecological Group to complete a woodland and wetland restoration plan for Magnolia Springs Parkland and to use park development fund to fund that. So moved.
Is there a?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
This is for the, the park and wetland area that is in the Magnolia Springs development, the one between Isham and Acker roads. And they are looking at what they can do as far as preserving that wetland and that kind of well area that they have in there. Looks like $3,500 for that, to put that plan together.
Alder Person Mieske.
I support this, but good curious, did this go through Parks?
Yeah.
It did.
Okay. Yeah, Parks looked at it on June 20th.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is R 114 of 2023, and this one came from C A C P. And my mind's going blank on who the chairperson is. Alder Person? Is it Shurlocke? You're the chair, right, Jonathan?
Yep, that's me.
All right. You can introduce this one then. Thank you.
Yep. So as was said, this is Resolution R 114, 2023. And this is a resolution to name the new Keegan Farm Park in Magnolia Springs. And so moved.
Is there a second? Second by Alder Person Jensen. Anything you'd like to add, Alder Person Shurlocke?
Yeah, so we went through a little bit of discussion on how best to name this park. And we decided that the easiest course of action would be to follow with the donors of the land and name Keegan Farm Park. Yeah, so I mean, we talked about lots of different options, but this one seemed the easiest and also simplest and made the most sense, given the history of the land and the family's roots here in Stoughton.
All right. Thank you. So the policy basically states that once the development is determined, that the C A C P goes through the naming rights policy, and they can either come up with a name or they can do a contest. And in this choice, they decided to go with the Tygen Family Park because that's kind of what this area is known for. And Odine Tygen had been fire chief, public works director, and his family owned the farm there. So I think that's kind of the history of this one. We will have some other parks coming up in the future. There'll be one at Stonecrest at some point. And then obviously, out at the Stone Trailers property, there'll be some parkland on at least one side of the highway, maybe both. And then the Rivers and Trails Task Force is looking at possibly naming some trails or some segments of trails. So that policy is yet to be completed. And I would expect, once they do, that they would forward that recommendation to the Park and Rec Committee and ultimately would come here for trail naming. And I think they're going to use a lot of the same criteria. Okay. Any discussion on this one? Alder Person Reeves.
Just a quick typo, resolved, and now there it be resolved, just needs an L in the final.
Oh, okay. There it is. Anything else on this one? Director Ehlinger?
The date introduced needs to be corrected to today's date.
Where am I seeing that?
Right next to the file number.
Oh, this date?
Yes.
Yeah, it should say July 11th instead of June 27th. Okay.
That's what happens when you recycle a different resolution.
All right. Anything else? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Item number 11 is American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA money. And then this one here, is this a conversation that you want to have, Dave? I don't know if this one went through the committee at all.
Sure, unless, do you want to do it? Okay. Just in a nutshell, the foundation has said, okay, we're ready to receive the funds. And so I, based upon the fact that they're not going to be dispersing the funds till November, I asked the Finance Committee when they'd like to disperse the funds to the community foundation. In essence, would the community foundation get the interest for a couple of months? Or should the city retain the interest for a couple of months? The Finance Committee voted to retain it. However, they wanted to bring it to the attention of the council. Greg, I think you were the one who actually asked for that. So were you, I don't know if you were looking for a vote or just informational only. Oh, you did? Okay.
I just wanted to keep everything related to ARPA dollars transparent out into the regular council so that everyone's aware as to what we're doing it, why we're doing it.
So as I put in the memo, if you concur with that decision, I anticipate sending it out on the first Thursday of October, October 5th. So it would arrive approximately three weeks before they start dispersing the monies.
Dave, just out of curiosity, what is the amount of interest that we're expected to garner from now until then, till November?
Right now, we're earning about 4% interest, you know. So if you're looking at one year, that's $4,000. So two months, you're looking at about $400 total. The reason I recommended holding it off, we elect, or we paid for the mailer for the ARPA foundation, so that was several hundred dollars. I thought it was reasonable for us to keep the interest earnings to offset the postage and printing costs.
No, I think that's reasonable. So would that interest rate, interest then just go back into the ARPA funds?
Right now, we have the ARPA funds in a segregated fund. Nothing else occurs in there. So interest earnings do go into that fund. That's why we had a fund balance of about $14,000 at the end of last year from excess interest earnings. The federal government does not restrict it, that interest earnings have to be used for ARPA. We could use it, again, for Beanie Babies and bubble gum if we wanted to. But right now, all that interest is remaining in the ARPA fund.
No, that would be, I would like that because then that gives us more money to possibly do more good things with it.
Correct. You're absolutely right. You know, if you wanted to, just to use the example from earlier today, if you wanted to use some of those funds for the Downtown Merchants Association, that would be a funding source. To be honest, if you're going to do something like that, I would prefer that you use the ARPA funds first to make sure that we spend it. You know, whether you're using the ARPA funds or the interest funds, it really doesn't matter. But I'd like to make sure that we adhere to the spending requirements.
No, no, I agree with you totally on that. I just, it's nice to know that we're getting some interest, that we actually have additional funds to actually use.
Correct.
Other projects.
Yeah, and it's not lapsing to the general fund at year-end or anything. And that's the way, as the 24 budget is being set up, I'm going to make that same assumption.
That'd be good.
Dave, just as an extension off of that, the interest isn't governed under the same deadlines as the actual ARPA dollars, correct?
Correct. Interest, there's no restriction on it whatsoever. We don't have to spend those. So let's just put a number out there. Let's say we get $30,000 in interest over the life of it. If the council wants, we can leave that $30,000 sitting in there for a purpose that you're going to decide it in '29.
So were you looking to take action on this, or is this just a communication?
As far as I'm aware, it's just a communication. I put it on the agenda saying discussion and possible action. If the council wanted to take a vote to support it or just leave it as the Finance Committee did, council can also make a decision, no, we want to pay the foundation right now. So we kind of left it up to you. There's no action required, but I gave you the ability to take action if you wanted to.
I guess just to make it clean, I guess I would move to approve that we pay in November as per what was decided in finance.
October, you mean?
Yeah, whatever you said that you were going to do.
Okay.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Reeves. Any discussion? And I guess the only thing I would add, just for food for thought, I think there are still some monies that haven't been, you know, allocated.
Correct. And I'm going from memory. There's about $350,000 that was not earmarked for anything. And there was two earmarks, one for sustainability, and I believe the other one was for D E I activities, but I'm not 100% certain on that.
And we can provide an update. And I guess the reason I go food for thought is, you know, to understand if the council would like us to do anything before or wait until after the budget process.
I thought with the last ARPA meeting that we had, and maybe your memory is better, we were going to wait a year after our last decision to see what transpired, to make sure there was no emergency funding that we needed. And then, when was that, in April, we would make our, our next round of decisions. That's, at least is that how you remembered it?
It is. And then also, given, you know, possible revenue sharing, you know, if we're going to have extra money there, I think it would be helpful. That's, I don't know that we discussed that, but my thought is, you know, let's see what comes from the state too. Because if they, if we do get some extra money and it's earmarked, you know, in a certain way, then that may have some bearing on our, what we may want to do with other money. So I think having the full picture would be helpful before we make long-term decisions for that money.
Okay, sounds good. And we will be getting some more shared revenue from the state, but we're still trying to understand what the rules would be and how we would be able to utilize that. It would be operations money in the area of police, fire, EMS. be able to utilize that, it would be operations money in the area of police, fire EMS, um, and public works are the qualifying categories, but as Dave said on a conference call we had today, the devil is in the details, we don't know the details yet, once we do, we'll provide the council with an update. We anticipate there's going to be some, uh, webinars coming up for Dave and I to attend and probably at our conferences as well. I, I thought I heard of July first, a twenty-four date today on the call.
I think that's when the league is anticipating a meeting, um, well, we're already past July first though.
Of next year as far as the first release of the, of the share.
Oh, wow, really, that long?
But.
Well, the shared revenue is typically released, uh, fifteen percent in July and eighty-five percent in, um, November.
Yeah, so I, I think we'll be able to manage that, but as we get closer to the budget process, which we're going to talk about internally, um, tomorrow we have a leadership meeting, we're going to kind of do an overview of our budget process, and we'll be sending some, save the dates out here shortly for that, so, just so you guys know, um, and hopefully we can agree on some days and times, but we'll get you some details of what that looks like as we learn more, and I, I think it makes sense to kind of pull off at least, you know, on this part until we further understand that. Um, we do have a few requests that are out there yet, so if you decide that, you know, you want to talk about specific requests between now and then, you know, you can reach out to Regina, we'll figure out if we're going to call a committee the whole or if we're going to let it ride until April. Um, otherwise, if there isn't any questions, we can vote on the motion. No questions, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries, and then, uh, the next item is R-one-fifteen, um, of twenty-twenty-three, and this one came from the Finance Committee, and I think we added another document in the packet as well. Alder Person Schumacher?
Um, this is R-one-fifteen, twenty-twenty-three, a resolution to accept the tax incremental district's financial statements dated twelve-thirty-one-twenty-two, so moved.
The second was Alder Person Jensen? All right, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Um, was there another item?
Yes.
Okay, oh, yeah, first time looking at an old agenda, I'm sorry. Um, ordinance twenty-three of twenty-twenty-three, um, who would like to introduce this one?
Good thinking.
Yeah, Curvello usually introduces somebody, would you like to do this one, Tom? Okay, anybody else? Alder Person Schumacher?
I'll, I'll take it then.
All right.
Um, this is a, this is a first reading of ordinance twenty-three of twenty-twenty-three, um, this is an ordinance for the direct annexation by unanimous approval of a portion of the Town of Dunn to the City of Stoughton, Dane County, Wisconsin, and it's first reading.
All right, and who would like to walk us through this?
I can, I can certainly give you an overview. Uh, this property is, um, the east, the west side of U.S. Highway fifty-one, north of county, or, north of Rutland on Town Line Road. Um, would you like me to share my screen, Mayor?
Uh, sure.
On the right-hand side of the page is U.S. Highway fifty-one, north to south, on the, the southern border, um, is Rutland on Town Line Road. This property is adjacent to the, the east side development that's planned as part of the STI project. STI Holdings is, has an offer to purchase this property, uh, they plan to close the end of, uh, end of this month, assuming the annexation moves forward. Also, just to give you an illustration on the screen, I can share, uh, this screen that just gives you a broader perspective of the municipal boundaries that exist there. Just one second, this is the, um, Dane County mapping area, you can see the area that I've highlighted is the annexation area, the other lines indicate the, the municipal boundaries for the City of Stoughton and its surrounding town. Um, there are three isolated properties or three isolated Town of Dunn properties on the southern edge of this border, uh, the correspondence that you see in the packet is from the Department of Administration, who has identified them as isolated but not created in a town island under the, under the statute, so, um, they've found that it would be in the public interest to annex this property, you're not against the public interest, um, so that is, that is the additional document that was sent out today to, uh, provide that additional position on the, on the annexation. Tonight's introduced, it's being introduced as a first reading since it is an ordinance, we'd expect the, uh, second reading to occur on July twenty-fifth. We also are in the process of preparing the, uh, pre-annexation agreement to have acted on by the Finance and Council on the twenty-fifth. Pre-annexation agreement will be very consistent with what we've done on other annexations, itemizing, um, the, the responsibility to cover certain costs related to development and/or consideration of development of that area.
Does the Town of Dunn have any objection to this or any comment?
Uh, they've raised a question about whether it was created in town island, uh, they raised that with the DOA, and the DOA letter identifies that as an isolated property under the, under recent rulings, uh, not as a town island, and I, I don't know if they'll challenge it legally or not, um, or if they have standing to do so, um, but the, the three properties that remain in the Town of Dunn will still be serviced by the Town of Dunn Municipal Services. They are part of the City of Stoughton Fire District, part of our EMS District, um, last night I, I highlighted the fact that the city did work cooperatively with the Town of Dunn and Rutland to help pave the portion of Rutland on Town Line Road, uh, the city participated in our percentage of costs related to the frontage of that roadway that was ours, so, um, I think we've collaborated quite well in that area. Um, one of the properties in the Town of Dunn along Highway fifty-one is slated for, um, relocation as part of the twenty-twenty-six project, when the Highway fifty-one project, uh, the majors project goes through there, um, I, I have not had any discussions with the town specifically and/or, or the property owners about future plans.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? Otherwise, we'll see this one at the next meeting. Okay, and I think that's all we have for tonight, right? If I get back to my agenda here. A quick night for both meetings, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, have a good night.
Good night.
Night.